There we go.
I don't think you're the greatest here in the state.
They work best in warmer climates where the temperature as it drops, blows very much. Efficiency drop real. Which is like the real cold tents that you get up in Canada.
Here.
Them souths. Definitely working with your air conditioning and your heating in the same unit. So.
Right, yeah. You think below twenty, forget it.
If you turn your pillar on.
To at least three different people that have them. Say once you just below twenty degrees.
That's weird.
If they're no. You just can't, you can't do it. We'll be here now for fifty, fifty-five, that's it.
Oh.
Now you got a. Yeah, it's a point my line.
It's interesting.
People are more successful than Williams. And one and very big one.
Feel a little weird, but.
Everyone still.
It's open, meeting goes.
Everybody go.
Someone have water, someone wants money, it's better to have water, someone has water.
Yeah.
Actually, summer time.
Yeah. Okay, apologize for the delay, the uh technical issues. Um, so Linda is um online and out of town. So she'll be joining us uh with her iPhone. So I'd like to open the uh July fifth, twenty twenty-three Wocatli Select Board Meeting. Um, and would like to uh begin with any amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments? I have one, and that is uh. Uh Sal who is here uh to uh finalize uh the signature state revolving loan programs. And uh so we will put him at the beginning, uh right after comments from the community. Um, and uh so I'll move on and see if we can get a motion for to approve the meetings. Uh minutes of June twenty-first. You.
I'll say.
Second. Any discussion, any corrections? Hearing, so. We will accept the, and approve the minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, actually, of correspondence, we uh have very limited correspondence this time around. Uh, we have been acknowledged by uh the Department of Health, that Bernard has been accepted as. Uh, health officer, um. And he for a three-year term to be beginning on seven one. And uh the deputy health officer uh has also been approved. Uh, that is Kline, K O I N E. So we'll correct that. All right, so uh first comments from the community. Um, we had uh Brian Cohen, who I believe is going to uh postpone and join us at our next meeting. Um, so we will table Brian for the moment. And we have Linda tomorrow. So um Linda, I'll give it to you.
Okay, I'm here because of my driveway. Been here since nineteen eighty-nine, and it is washed out. I believe it's because of greater operator. Not winging back the sides of the road the way he's supposed to. And the corner. Used to be like a racetrack. And that was brought to my attention by Nick Minaj. He said, the water has nowhere to go but to go back to your place.
Okay. So I have spoken with Dylan, um. We feel it's been a very good operator.
Goes fast.
All right. Um. Like there are several factors here that I think need to be considered. Um, one is I realize is your driveway had not eroded for many, many, many years. Um, but I do want to note that the pond has changed dramatically just over the past two to three years.
I know, it did more, it did more house, I realized now.
Speeding, traffic, heavy trucks. That done. Uh, and Dylan acknowledges that yes, the burn needs to be taken down. And he is scheduled to do that.
Why wasn't it done before you went up there and talked to him about it?
Why didn't he do it when he first started grading it there?
Yes.
I believe he's doing a professional job now. There are several residents in town that are historically. Many of them, including. Um, and they have many, many different opinions, many, many different experiences. Now, we would be happy to go up there and remove the burn, but it put in the curve as you, you note. Um, I'd like to have you to come and supervise that process with your expertise and sign off on the process. Um, that is the extent of what we can do with the town. We are, through our insurance and our policies, we are unable to go on private property with our equipment.
These other contractors out there can do the job.
Yes, there are, so you, so. You're making a request.
I am.
And the request is?
I need to have some gravel.
And how much gravel do you need and what expense?
Oh, should be at least a truckload, I know.
Okay.
Maybe even more.
All right. Um, and this would be at the expense of the taxpayers for your driveway.
I didn't create the problem.
I'm sorry?
I didn't create the problem.
Note, the rain, the cars, the trucks, the speed creates.
And the one not cutting the burn off. And the one not keeping that corner the way it's supposed to be cut.
All right.
Can't be flat. It's never been flat.
Did you direct him earlier when you saw this burn go away or you saw the? Uh, when you noticed that it was, in your opinion, would be done incorrectly? Did you speak with the Wocatli or uh Road Department or us to correct the problem as you did?
No.
All right.
Not.
So.
I spoke to him probably two years ago, and told me you don't have to slow down. Push that lever down so you can get rid of these potholes.
Um. I'd like to first the board to weigh in on this, uh this is a request for town money. You're going with private driveway as a result of natural occurrences.
It's not natural occurrences.
That's your argument. Excellent. Is there a culvert at the end of your driveway?
There is a culvert. My driveway goes down and there is a culvert right there.
There's the issues, um. I can't tell you how many times over the past four or five years. Individuals have requested uh private property uh because of a culvert may have broken down because of erosion and because of. This or that, pointing to the town, asking the town to fix it at the town's expense. And therefore, precedent this then. And once that precedent is set. And we take calls to three, four minutes a week. Um. With, with issues. We can't.
That's correct.
You can, and still. You know, I feel that as a town just can't afford the. Ever president and have this being ongoing thing in the future, fixing the road. Yeah. But not getting anything on private property. Sorry.
I realize the town can't put their trucks in my door yet. But there is other people that can come in and bring that load of gravel in.
If you're talking about repairing your driveway itself. We cannot do that. We can fix the road to the best of the knowledge and skill or standard.
And do the ditching.
Was it?
Do the ditching.
Yeah, do the ditching and everything. But we can't fix the driveway itself. It's just beyond the town's parameters of what they can do.
So I'm gonna have to continue to put loads of gravel in my door yard if I never had to before.
The town can correct within. I mean, look at the situation, can correct everything that town can correct, that's in the road or the ditching. But you can't do anything about the driveway. Am I correct on that?
Like, that, that is my opinion, yes.
Why do I pay taxes?
We all pay taxes every last.
Why the name?
It helps support the functions of the community, whether it's the road department, highway department, school or. The municipal government function. I don't know, I've been on the board nine years and. People ask me what's. What do it does well, I don't. We try not to spend money we don't have. We try to behave as if we was our own budgets at home. But it's a small town with unlimited tax base. And the last thing we want to do is raise taxes for anyone. Me, it sounds more like the ditching has never been done proper. So that's what's really washing down the road. If you haven't got ditching on the whole side of your driveway and ditching, we'll get to that in Culver to take care of the waterfall. It's gonna keep washing out. There's not.
Never had before.
Well, we've had a lot of rain this year too.
Had a lot of rain last year, year before, a year before.
Uh, my garden was dry two years in a row.
Well, back since the flood was came along, my door yard didn't wash out.
Something's changed, that's all I can tell you, either the ditching's changed or the curvature of the road. And we are gonna go and, and fix it, you know, and. Um, I know they put in water bars last time you talked to them.
Yes.
And.
Finally, I'm stopped. Water has to go somewhere besides my door yard.
Right. And again, I think, you know, there's a lot of expertise in town. Uh, and we're happy to have anybody come up and supervise the process. And um, I know that whether it's Dylan or Joey, they're driving next to me, they're super focused, so. You know, they may not have seen you. We have an excellent crew, I'm very excited to have them. Lucky. They bring a lot of industrial experience to the job.
Well, they forgot that state would be renamed to burn.
Third.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you. So. I mean, I think you're gonna say, I. They don't wanna punish the road crew. Less than a year ago, we were in no road, zero, and it was October. Because nobody would come out. Nobody would come out, and we saved this group. And, and they'd become, we get many, many complaints. And most of the complaints I get are because of dust.
Oh, yeah, they love dust, I know that, I hide my cars in my garage.
Yeah, and uh. As of recently, the complaints have been grading, and there hasn't been enough grading. The reason there hasn't been enough grading is because it uh. Su- supply chain problems with chloride. So we're kind of damned if we do, damned if we don't. If we do grade without chloride. Going both off the books here.
Sure enough.
Yeah. And um, we don't, there's nothing we can do to accelerate the chlorine deliveries. And they, they are, they are very difficult, very expensive to get this. So, um. So in my opinion, I really think we have to deny the request and make every effort to get the road, the burn taken down. And um whatever else your history and expertise.
Well, there's even a burn right here by my fence. It never used to be there. I mean, that is that fine, and it never used to be there.
Understood, understood. Um. Cause I, I don't know if you have any other suggestions, um. We've definitely talked to Dylan and Joey and Chan about it. Um, direct them to correct the problem and, and open it up for supervision. So that the, you know, the local uh residents that feel they're affected by water shit are happy with the work they do.
I know, um, I talked to Bill Pickens too, and he redid the door yard last year. And the water's been running in his too, he said. He's really bad shape right now, otherwise would have came by.
Okay. Well, you know, you can also, you, you, everybody's always welcome to a select board meeting, you're, you're welcome to continue to appeal this. Um, but and, and I will, this is a board, so it's a collective decision. But my, my personal opinion right now is that we'll do everything possible to correct the problem. Uh, but in my opinion, we would deny um. Going to taxpayers' expense to fix an individual story. When the question is kind of, it wasn't done intentionally, was it done because of uh kidnapped? Um, operators, was it done because inexperienced operators?
Experienced operator.
And, and. Where does experience come from? Where do you get experience?
My. What? Probably even talking to somebody else, some other town operator. That would help.
Which they do, they do. Bill Moore's been up here many times too. And Dylan is not, he's not a freshman. Yeah, he's, he's been uh reading for quite for many, many years. I only refer that. Now, if there's a burn that shouldn't be there, our job is to remove the burn, so. So are there any other observations or do you think any? How concerns or okay? Like I said, you know, you can uh, you can bring neighbors together, um, you can monitor the operations. And we can certainly um come to the select board meeting anytime. Something.
And it's gonna be up here, it's uh.
He is.
I hope he's busy. It's on a road, I can tell that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I uh, I asked him today to get.
He's here since thirteen sixty-eight, um, I know. How much it's grown.
You know, in sixty-eight, how many cars were?
I know, there was only five.
Yes. Um, so anyway, I talked to him today and wanted him to uh, uh, to go out as soon as possible. And, you know. I'll take a ride up with him, get the whole crew. And I'll call you when we've got a time, you know, set and done.
Yeah, I'm a little bit advanced because a lot of times I'm not there because of other reasons.
Okay. Good. So.
All right.
So, um. We've had a formal request, do, do we need to make a motion to? Do we need to make any motions?
No, thanks.
Linda?
What, what?
Um, do we need to make a motion to uh respond to the request?
I would think so if you're not gonna go any further. Cause she's, she's made a request.
Yeah, so. I'll open it up for a motion. All right. Hope I get this right, it starts from things, you know. Make a motion that we do everything we can with the. Guide law has. I'm the department to fix the situation in the road. But we definitely, we have to deny providing labor material on a private property. Wait, yeah. Do you have a second?
I know that road used to be crowned too. A crown.
Yeah.
And I used to have a road course. She would walk on either side of the end of her hips.
Uh-huh.
She'd walk regularly with that road.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, crowning the roads is really important, that's what gets the water off.
Exactly.
Yeah. So we will focus on that as well.
I'll say.
Uh, you second, was there any further discussion? Uh, so done.
Call for a vote.
A call for a vote, yes, please. All in favor? I.
Hi. Hi.
Any of those? Hearing them. Motion passes. Thank you, and we will definitely stay in touch.
Okay, I just hope it does not happen again.
I hope not.
Eighty-nine, two thousand and three. It doesn't make no sense.
Understood. Um. All right, so if we could, so if we can jump into the state revolving loan program. That would be great. What we're doing here, uh correctly if I'm wrong, so that is where um. This is the um funding application uh for the water infrastructure system. And it just requires the signature of each of those select board members, correct?
Yeah, so on the last page of the package you're holding there, wants the state revolving loan programs. Uh, that would require a signature from uh each of the board uh members. As well as the other law firm here, we would just be uh a signature from, in this instance, the vice chair, just because.
Okay, great, so what was here is a master copy and we'll, we'll pass this around, um. Linda, I assume you have reviewed this? Were you there, Linda?
Hopefully, we're on.
I did not review it because I was driving all day and it didn't come until this afternoon.
Oh, okay. Were you comfortable with us signing this today?
Um, if somebody's looked at it, I'm sure it's okay.
I have, uh, I had, I was able to print it out earlier. Uh, I did go through it, I did see it, it stuck out mainly. Um.
Yeah, so this application was developed, uh, Stone developed it, sent to L C P C, we did review it. Uh, within this. So on the second page, works as a long request. Uh, included within that total amount of requests for the law will be L C P C's coordination agreement.
Right.
Uh, within that, uh, myself and also Tori Helway will uh work with the wastewater committee, help with uh public outreach. Uh, that can be a, a website as an example, will also help with the ordinance development and uh the process of uh. Run the.
Okay.
And then one thing I was hoping to do at the next select board meeting, which from my understanding is in two weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, and two, I was hoping to have the agenda, uh, get on the agenda, just about the current wastewater committee. And uh kind of also break the diagram that developing to. Make it maybe as possible for everyone in the town to understand how we go from day to day. Uh, just because I know this process can be quite daunting.
Right, right, okay, then. The, the, there's some, you see, I'm saying this.
Signature. So typically, from my understanding, it is a. It's a first come, first served basis, so we would like to send this in as soon as possible, and the application window started July first. And so Stone would prefer to get the signatures today, we would then scan it over to them, and then they would do the final submission.
Um, so I'll just ask Linda again, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, um. And I'd like to pass it round to the other board members unless there's any objection. Got Linda's signature and give the.
Awesome. That I will.
You're signing? There. Okay, that's required, isn't it? Uh, a, a warrant is required.
We just need to.
Are there concerns? Yes.
I'd rather talk about that later. Well, this is. Current?
No.
People need to write you.
Yeah, I mean, if there are objections, then uh. I mean, the board should hear them and.
And Sal.
Certainly should hear them.
Okay. Where do I sign?
Uh, how much should be the first page here at the bottom? Uh, or so.
All right.
On the.
Now, I think that Linda's signature on there, I think she mentioned Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will let, um, no, thank you for this one, and I will let uh Stone and L C P C staff.
Okay, great.
So, uh, so do you want me to sign it? Do I need to sign it, Sal?
So there's five members on the select board committee, technically, I will double check what it. How much technically a warrant can take come to, come to me, and we do have a majority uh of the signatures needed. So I will double check when that one, I think we're okay, but if not, you will hear from me tomorrow and figure out a time, that was freedom.
All right, I was just saying, leave it there if you need my signature, if not, just process it.
Yeah, if, if I, I don't mind, it's not a part of it. But um, thank you very much for your time, I'll let you get on the rest of the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Sal. All right, so we'll do the private managers report, um. Uh, the private burial. Uh, policy that has been drafted, um, is in your, um. I think what I can do is have everybody between now and the next meeting uh review the, uh, the document. Um, it's fairly straightforward, it's based on the state statute. Um, and it includes a application. Um, and it includes a applications form, permit application form, which clearly outlines, uh, what are the, uh, the requirements and the parameters of a private burial. Um, the local health officer is key to this process. Uh, so Bernard is familiar with the document, he understands it at, at this point. But, um, I think it's important for everybody to just do a proof on it, uh, have any questions or any concerns about it. Uh, all of the, uh, verbiage in this has come straight from the state statute. Um, and, uh, the private burial permit application um, uh, also comes from state statute, uh, and we, I did add a couple of, um additions to it, um primarily GPS coordinates.
Yeah.
Uh, we, the GPS coordinates, I think, are very important. The North Wilker-Gold Road study results. Um, I am in the process of getting in touch with Craftsbury. Um, that was the next, next move with that. Um, it was also submitted to, um, uh, the resident on Dock Road and, um, a couple on North Wilker Road, uh, just so that there's some, yeah, there's some public feedback. And we have had, um, so far, which a little surprising.
It, it occurred to me after that meeting, uh, all of the percentage for heavy loads is quite small. Now, I felt like, dummy, I was being that big break by the other night with the old boy trailer. Wonder how many SUVs you could stack in the same space as the whole of the road? I mean, that's a lot. Hope we're in there, even though the overall percentage of the heavy equipment is relatively low.
Yeah, I, the, the study surprised me in, uh, it just seems to me that there's more heavy traffic than with that study we're reviewing. I don't know why that is, um, I did go back to LCPC, uh, that said, like, is there, is there a marking error on these things, yeah? And again, of course there is. Uh, but, uh, you know, short of doing a, a second study, I think the first thing in my mind that we should do is, uh, interpret that number because it's a percentage, yeah, interpret that into how many trucks does that really mean? Yeah, and, you know, it's definitely more than one a day. Um, second step is Craftsbury, third step would be to for the board to come together and discuss a ordinance, uh, restricting through tractor trailer.
Yeah.
Railroad Street frontage, so I don't know if you noticed it driving in, but, um, we have had it, we have uh, received, uh, permission, access called access permission uh, from the state, there was a sense of urgency because of the July fifteenth, uh, ride through. Uh, so we were authorized to cut back fifteen feet along railroad security and to introduce a portallet. So the portallet is here, it's been installed, and the fifteen feet, um, have been moved back. Uh, and I think the road crew did a fantastic job with that, and they, um uh, took it to the level of, of getting all of the stumps and so forth out. So we can actually claim grass for, as some have preferred wildflowers. Along that line. But what it's done is it's opened up the line of sight, so you can now, if you're on the trail, you can see the town. And that, that was one of the objectives there. Um, the safety grant is pending, I heard from them today. Uh, so it looks like we will be notified on that grant, um, next week, midweek next week. That's a grant that allows us to buy some cautioner signage, which is needed around. Uh, website development, um we have, um so movement on the website development, uh, Bradley, uh, has started to map out and has started to make some changes as counties, we have successfully migrated it. Uh, and so we should start to see, uh, hopefully every meeting going forward we'll see something on the website, uh, that we can review, it's all in the stage site. So we review the stage site, if we all agree it's good, um, then it goes out. If not, then we send it back for, for change. The, uh, the waste district site visit, this is toward the, uh, the waste, the oil district, the waste district um, has been moved to Sunday, July thirtieth. Um, Sarah will be here at nine o'clock on Sunday, July thirtieth. Uh, she'll have, uh, information, we'll set up a table for her. And, uh, she will be talking to the public about recycling and, and, you know, just probably probably all for especially recycling in town of those. Door Waste Day has now been scheduled for July twenty-second, which is a sad day. We got confirmation from SWEET that, uh, a roll-off is available. And we got confirmation that Joey can be available to, uh work the excavator. Just an update on the Damian Webb lawsuit, um the, our lawyer representing, uh, the town, um did a motion for dismissal. During, through his research, uh, a couple of things came to light, and one was that, uh, the Damian's response time, uh, exceeded, said, the limitations. Actually, one, yeah, uh, yeah, of the district's one. And so based on that, the lawyer chose to, uh, motion for dismissal. Now, we have to wait for it to go to the divorce. Um, no parking signs on Corley Road, uh, they, they, no parking signs popped up out of the blue. Nice. Blue, uh, it turns out that state put those in there. Um, and so I contacted, uh, the state Jackie today and said, hey, that's great, wonderful, thank you for doing that, now can you put someone on the bond book? And, um, yeah, so she is moving forward with that one with the microphone as well.
So I wasn't losing my mind.
What's that?
I wasn't losing my mind.
No, you weren't, nope, they were there, yeah.
Yeah, I knew I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, so Jackie saw him and put him there, um. And, but I do want, I think the board, uh, we should note that, uh, the rail trail is taking off big time. Uh, I don't know if you noticed all the traffic in rail trail. But it's it's, every day it seems to, to grow. Um, the other day, I was here at the office, and fifteen cutters in our parking lot here, fifteen. Yeah, not counting the ones that park in the parking lot. So, so it definitely is getting a lot of attention. Uh, we've had a lot of people come in asking to use the restroom, so the, uh, uh, the portallet is a good thing, yes. And finally, uh, the MERP applications, this is the energy program, um, is, uh, has been opened up. And, uh, we have applied for onsite evaluation, it's free. Uh, and so I come in here and, but we did get a quote from Gould Electric as to what it would take to, uh, replace all of the lights in this building to LED. Um, and then we'll look at what MERP says and if, what kind of, uh, uh, program that they can put together for us. Under longer term North Wilker ordinance policy, we just kind of went through the scenario with that. Um, Dave's building policy has, has not been begun yet. Um, my way department is focusing on road grading, um, there is a problem with chloride right now. Um, and it's a real touch and go, you know, do you grade without chloride and, uh, you know, and potholes are growing, so, um I'm gonna work with them tomorrow and see if there's something we can do about borrowing some chloride from Elmore. Uh, because Elmore stores their chloride in our garage. Um, yeah. They have their own tanks there.
I thought if it rained, though, if, if you, if you graded and then the rain would get the dust down, that doesn't work. I mean, they, they have never chlorid every road every time they grade, ever.
Right.
So I don't know if that's an excuse or what. I mean, I know it's better when it's really, really dry, but it has not been dry at all.
No, it hasn't been dry for a long time.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
So. Yeah, I'm gonna have to sit down with the guys and see, you know.
Yeah.
Because the concerns are pond road mainly, it's all pond road.
Town Hill is horrible. I think.
With potholes or with dust?
Yes, with potholes. There's no dust, it rains every day.
Okay. You know, I'm trying to get some, some good answers on this. The road segments have been approved and the grant came in today. And, uh, so the road crew is now cleared to, uh, start working on the segments. Um, their first segment's gonna be a keeler pond. Uh, they're doing gear for proper installations, and I believe when we're seeing that it's completed at this point. All right. Any questions about any of this? Okay. So getting back to La Moyle Valley rail trail. The clarification on the uh, access permission, the fifteen feet, that does not preclude releasing the entire section. So for the states, yeah, you can still do that. Um, so what they can do it quickly. And the reason we did this, uh, was because it'd be done quickly and would be done and ready by the fifteenth. Um, and there will be on the fifteenth a celebration. Um, so the governor is coming through, he goes to Morrisville. Uh, and then we'll stop in Rockford for a water stop. Um, I have a feeling that there's a, this is a big contingent of people. Um, I don't know if Bernie Sanders is gonna stop here or not. I don't believe he's riding a bicycle. Um, but when, uh, but when the governor comes through, there'll probably be a lot of, uh folks with him, uh, so we can expect that. And Deb has some, uh, some ideas about that uh, process, and this is at two fifteen PM, so.
Two forty-five is the scheduled water stop, and they're anticipating that the water stop will actually last about ten minutes, so it's kind of a quick in and out, at least for the governor and his contingent and private media, there will be other people, and so, um, the gardening and park committee is hosting a garden party and starting at two PM, and we have volunteers who are bringing, uh, fruit, snacks, beverages that we will hand out to participants and visitors that day. And also, we're working with Kelly Rosatano, who lives on West Hill, and she is part of an art group. And so they're planning something to host, uh, in the garden that day, it might be rock painting for children, adults, uh, something of that nature, but, um, Kelly's putting together the information right now, and we'll get that posted uh, in town and on the front porch forum and, uh, doing a little advertising, so we can really show off Wilket, and, um, I would also note that, um, I'm on Facebook and there is a Facebook page, Fans of the La Moyle Valley Rail Trail, uh, which really is very active and offers a lot of insight as to, uh, activity on the rail trail. Uh, it covers all ninety-three miles, but people post when they ride, for example, from Morrisville to Hardwick, or, you know, Fisher Bridge is hugely popular uh, with people on the trail. And, um they are, well, they've already noticed, as soon as the portallet went up, someone had a photo of it posted.
Shame, shame.
And it's like, woo-hoo, tiny little Wilker is, you know, doing all of these things. So, um, yeah, I just want to emphasize what Kurt mentioned earlier, that uh, there is so much activity on the rail trail and, uh, life is, life is now going to be different in Wilket because of it.
You mean, you mean the state's gonna have to think about the next thing, the legislature putting more parking locks and the whole thing, so cars can park more than twenty cars at just locations?
Well, you know, um, well, I have opinions on, yeah, the state coming up with all these great ideas, and that the expense falling on the eighteen municipalities.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, that's been an interesting thing, and even the idea, okay, now everybody knows, as they should, that there is a portable toilet. Uh, is that, that gets switched out, what, once a month, its service?
Or once a week.
Oh, once a week, okay, well, nevermind. That's better, but, I mean, well, yeah. So, um, there might even need to be a note that, uh, there is another portable toilet down by the ball field, um, if that becomes necessary. But, yeah, very exciting times.
Yeah.
So I had a, today I had a phone call while I was driving from Rich Westman. And, um he is coming up also with the other legislators, um, he's been in touch with the governor's staff, and he asked me to ask the select board if they would be willing to be there, um, for a photo shoot when the governor comes. So if you have any in, interest, um he's asking the select board to, to be there.
Two forty-five, and what day is that?
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
Yeah.
Well, I'll definitely be there.
My wife's birthday party, I'll be here anyway. Thirty-seven years, right? I'll tell you, I'll still be at the party, I'll take a break. Wouldn't have time to change the locks on the weekend anyway.
Okay, um. So the next item is a school street perimeter glance, uh, this is the bridge. Um, and I, everybody should have a copy of uh, the document in your email, yeah, and then we printed one up here, uh, so we have that printed. Um, in reviewing that, um I didn't see anything that I wanted to comment, or that I was qualified to comment. It's a, it's an It's a, it's an engineering document. And if you have, if you have a chance to look through it, if not.
So I asked Belinda to make Kurt Billings a copy.
Well, yeah, he has, he has a copy.
Okay, great.
So to review this, it can be a question to God's that are next meeting. Painting the interior of the town hall. Linda, have you?
So the ballet is very frustrated. Nathan did like one-fourth of the wall and then he left for his other job and there, and that was back in March. So they're a little frustrated with it. The Pam, the woman who cleans for us, that she'd be willing to do that. I reached out to her for an hourly rate, but then Kurt asked me to get back to her, which I did, asking for an estimate of time, which she did not get back to me with. So I don't have any answer for you.
Should we be looking for an alternate?
Maybe if it's reasonable, but someone who knows how to paint.
Right.
I mean, I don't want anyone. Just, just anyone, just to get it done. I can ask her, we can ask at the next meeting, bring it up at the next meeting. I can ask her again.
Okay, yeah. Cause if, if she's not able to commit, then I think the next thing to do is, is to try to somebody qualified that they can do it without, without busting the bank.
Right. Only because we promised the ballet that we would provide it and they have bought the paint, which that was kind of the deal, which was gonna be easy back then.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's unfortunate the way it fell apart. All right, so hybrid meeting room. I wanted to bring this up again because we have a, you know, growing interest in using the system and being able to understand, understand what to do. And, you know, it's been kind of a work in progress for a long time now. And we talked for a long time about just try to write down the UBCs of it. And then I'd like to put the individuals who are gonna operate it on in front of it, not at a meeting, but to create a hypothetical meeting and work through it. Also, I think we've been talking about getting the microphones fixed, getting them better, maybe getting more of them. And I think it's time to, to really proceed with that, if we can. I think everything you've done, Dolan has done for the, done with this, it's spectacular. And, and very, very much appreciated. But at the same time, I think we're right where we started from. You know, I don't think we're calling anybody in this room other than Dolan to run a successful meeting. Get it up and running and get it, get it and be successful with it. And that's, I, I believe that's where we need to be and need to focus. And before we do new cameras or new angles or new stuff, we need to get right down to the core where anybody that chairs a meeting can actually run it. I, I, cause I believe one of the, one of the things that we're, we're learning is that it's quite difficult to run this and be a meeting participant. So I think we need to really, really get comfortable with the system. So you can take the remote mouse, you can be here and you know, admit, admit.
It seems to be all you should be able, need to do is just admit people
and be able to show documents. And other than that, just make sure the meeting stays online.
I, I have a few comments if you'd like to hear. Admitting people is not required. A setting can be set so that people just get in. There's a security risk.
That's dangerous, yeah.
Correct, so, so that's why we've been doing it that way. There's always something. And today was no different. This computer, I believe, has been put to sleep after previous meetings instead of shut down. So when I turned it on, it had things in the memory that were not jiving. So I had to do a restart on it. But that can be solved with just a restart being part of the process of getting a meeting started through a checklist. Continue to learn new things about its operation. I'm excited about the new monitor. I think we're very close to the turnkey. I'm, me being here adds a little bit in that I can switch cameras between our document camera and the automatic camera. And sometimes I override the automatic camera just because it, it's a little excessive in its motion, I think, sometimes. So once I do a manual set, like right now, it's manually set, so it's not moving. Once you manually move it, it stays manual until you go to the document camera and you come back. And it re- resumes automatic. But somebody could just come in, start the meeting, leave it automatic, never switch to the document camera and successfully run a meeting. I think that's possible right now. I have started a Google Doc, which I plan to print and laminate and tape to the computer deck over here. And, and have a backup copy somewhere else where that one disappears. And, and potentially even save it on the desktop of the computer so that somebody can just double-click it and read it. I do think your idea of a training day is a good one and I'm happy to schedule that.
Okay, that would be, yeah, I, that would be great. Cause there's a lot, there's frustration and, you know, we hate calling you all the time. You know, it, 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 it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I, I've tried to be here for select board and DRB, not always up on forest committee and planning commission.
Right.
I don't know if those are the meetings here.
I've done, I've done a few of those.
Leader committee, maybe?
Leader committee, we, we do Zoom, we don't use this.
Right.
And, but yeah, if we can focus on individuals' training at the simplest level and, and not to get complicated with the document reader or anything else, step by step. And my other thought is that I think some of this equipment is funky. The monitor. You, you, I think you're used to it, so you can turn it on easily.
Yeah, I usually leave it on. Cause it goes to sleep into a little ground rock.
Yeah.
And when you turn the computer on, this tabletop monitor comes on on its own. The two TVs are operated by our.
Yeah, I'm fine, those are fine.
Yeah.
It's, it's this monitor right there.
Yeah, there's a power button that, if it's pressed and turned off, it.
It's funky.
Yeah, it doesn't like to come on.
Okay, so.
So I usually leave it on, it goes to sleep.
And then it frustrates new operators.
Right, and that, and that funkiness was shown in sort of the very basic level that this is, this was a repurposed computer, I believe.
Sure, yeah.
And so there's going to be some issues. It, it's not going to necessarily just work the way it's supposed to all the time because it's a little bit of an older model, a little bit underpowered
Yeah.
for this application. So again, you know, how much does the town want to get into it? It's working, but it helps to have an experienced technician to know when it's not working, figure out why and how to troubleshoot it quickly.
Right.
Because in the, in a meeting, time is of the essence, right? We held everybody up for a couple of minutes at the beginning. That could have been more, you know, if we didn't know what was going on.
So I, I'm thinking, we might wanna just not, not necessarily buy any more equipment, but I think we have some in-house that is newer.
Uh, computer system, okay.
And with that, we can get a decent monitor, which we also and then the mouse.
Yeah, the wireless mouse keeps getting left turned on. And so the batteries die and so I have a wired mouse, which is usually what I use.
Right.
But it's not a good one for it.
It's not, no, and it's very hard to see.
It's a ball mouse, which you can find.
Yeah, and so that adds to the.
Exactly what you're about to keep on? No, it's, you know, the actual little ball on my, my, yeah. Yeah, no, I don't know. It's just the optical mouse is the way to go, but.
Yes, if we can focus on that between here and the next like board meeting, I think that would be.
Yeah, I, I agree. I can get into, into the building. I do also want to troubleshoot a little bit with Logitech to see if we're getting the performance we're supposed to out of these microphones. There is the capacity on the, on this device is now, they're saying can handle up to seven microphones.
Right.
I believe it might require a software upgrade to do that. Whether or not that's necessary, I'd like to talk with them first. And I also, and I'm guessing our online viewers might be seeing a little glitch in the video from time to time. And that's a syncing issue that I'm not quite sure the reason of, and I'd like to talk to Logitech about that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't let little things like that get in the way of the bigger program by
Right.
getting operators up to speed.
And I was under the impression that you, Kurt, had, I, I think you told me this, would like to have the microphones temporarily mounted on the ceiling to see how they do before we cut holes.
Before you cut holes, yeah, yeah.
So that honestly is a tricky, tricky thing to get a microphone stuck to the ceiling without and get it to stay there.
Don't take.
Alien tank.
Alien tank.
Alien tankers, well.
Kidding.
I guess if we put it in the spot where the hole will be drilled, if it works, would be good, otherwise that, you know, it's going to leave a mark in here.
Yeah. Alien tank will not leave a mark.
Yeah, and we won't, oh, it won't leave a mark.
No, it's not supposed to.
It won't. Yeah, if you guys have the right material, I'd say that sounds good and we should do it in a way that they're not directly over top of all of your heads. Just in case.
Linda, can we ask you, how's the audio been tonight?
Oh, you can also ask Monica, she's been listening.
Monica.
I think the audio's been pretty good. You did forget Monica might be a member of the public that wanted to comment.
Oh, we did forget that.
You did, I'd love to comment.
Oh, please do, sorry.
You'll like this. I, I just wanted to, you know, commend all of you on the select board for your respectful treatment of the public and for your dedication to the interests of the town. You know, you, you all do a really good job and I, I want to thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. That's very nice.
Linda, Linda's there. Linda, do you have any commentary on the audio quality?
Once you rebooted, it was a lot better. In the beginning, it was horrible.
Interesting. Good to know.
But I could hear you fine on my iPhone once you rebooted it or redid it.
Yeah, good, yeah, it was something was wrong.
Yeah, one thing I might add is I've been watching other towns' select board meetings on YouTube. And I know that they have gone back to pre-COVID seating arrangements so that they are seated, you know, in a row like the select board used to be before the pandemic. And so that might, you know, if the board considered that, that might be something that could aid in audio going forward.
I would think that it would, yeah.
It might, but I have too many papers.
I actually have no idea what it looked like before.
So there's two of these bills. It looks like a poor man's Last Supper.
Okay, so, but Linda needs her own table.
Okay.
There are some maybe in center on YouTube, old ones.
Wow.
Yeah. Green Mountain TV.
Wow.
Kurt and I did it.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you were the camera crew?
Yep.
Sweet. Okay, anything else? Where's the mic?
No.
Can we entertain a motion?
I will make a motion. Seven oh eight PM. That we adjourned to select board meeting. Sorry, please, before I get in any more trouble.
Well, then. You? Brilliant, thanks for your time. Kind of an exception.
Thanks, Monica. Thanks, Linda.